I will now call the April 2nd, 2018 Blue Springs City Council meeting order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. Do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I want to welcome you in attendance as well as those that might be watching on cable TV to tonight's City Council meeting. Next, we have a consent agenda. Councilman Kayler asks that we pull item C. I accept the motion to approve the rest.
Stand move.
Your second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Kayler, item 3C.
Your Honor, I'd like to... I vote on the item because due to the fact that my son-in-law works for Turner Construction. Not presently going to be on that, this project, but he is affiliated with Turner Construction.
Good, thank you, Councilman.
I see.
Appreciate that. So, one of the other council members like to make a motion to approve item C.
Stand move. Stand move, Your Honor.
Your second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Abstain? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to vote no on that also.
Oh, and you're voting no. One abstention, one no. Motion still carries. Next, we have a presentation by the Human Relations Commission, annual report. Ms. Kinet Campbell, who is chair. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So, of course, I'd like to talk with you about what the commission has done in 2017 and what our plans are for 2018. I won't go over the overview. I think we all know what the HRC does. What is this for? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. And most of us know the history of the HRC and when it was started by the mayor and the former chief, Wayne McCoy, and with Dr. Emmanuel Gumpsey. So, currently, we have seven members, and they are Jane Bowerman, Antoine Jennings, until last, our last meeting, he stepped down, Susan Stokenberry, Marjorie Major, Lori Moon, and Gino Bueno, who is the vice chair. We also have two student reps, Na'vi Selfie and Manura. And I can't remember her last name right now. She's new. Captain Schneider serves as the city's liaison to the HRC. What we've done, well, what we did last year was we participated in the MLK celebration, which I had the honor of introducing Mayor Ross, and it was at First Christian Church. We also presented at the State of the City address where we're present. We had a block party at Autumn Place Apartments, and we marched in the Fall Fun Festival, excuse me, parade. I was also a part of the city planning committee. The HRC worked with Rita Valentiano from the Department of Justice and led some time ago to talk to the city or to have a city planning event. And I think there were a couple of us who were also at the police department award ceremony. So, our accomplishments for 2017, I've just mentioned some of them in the last slide, was that we did work for, with the city to have the city's spirit to address not only racial tensions but any of the concerns that the Blue Springs residents had. I think it was a very successful event, and from that, the Spirit Council was formed, and I think their first meeting is April 4th. And that's where they will talk about how we address or implement the three changes that came from the city's spirit in order to get those implemented within the city. We also, I mentioned, we had the block party and the Fall Fun Festival, and we had the Helping Residents Connect Fair, which was held at Vesper Hall in October. And the fair, actually, we have different people within the community that offer various resources for its residents to come and showcase what they, what they do. A couple of the commissioners attended the HRC forum. It was in Olathe, and probably about two years ago, I think we held the forum, and it was at Blue Springs Christian Church. So, it's a time for all of the HRCs to come together and share what they're doing, share ideas, things of that nature. We also attended the Police Department diversity training both in November and December, just to give our ideas or suggestions on how we thought that diversity could be implemented within our police department. The last thing is the Fair Housing Act, and what Scott Casey, who we know, I think he's on the...
Planning Commission.
Yes, the Planning Commission brought to us to change some of the wording to Amendment 265. And though that wasn't passed, we really got the opportunity to learn about some of the things that we feel needed to be changed and present that to the city council. For 2018, we had planned to develop a community award ceremony to recognize citizens of our government. However, in our last meeting, it was decided that it probably would be a better idea for us to nominate and recognize, not nominate, to recognize someone in our city who either professionally or as a volunteer is doing work that mirrors what we're trying to do with the Spirit Council as far as the three ideas that we will be working on to, to implement. That takes care of number two, which is the Spirit Council working on the goals that the city's spirit came of. We do plan to have neighborhood block parties. Our next one is actually April 14th, and we'll have it at Chapel Ridge Apartments. And we also plan to participate in some way, we're just not sure yet, in the Fall Fun Festival. We'll also have a booth at the National Night Out Against Crime, and the Helping Residents Connect Fair is instead of in the fall, because there are a lot of things that go on in the fall, so we kind of feel like that we don't get as much exposure as we could, so we've moved it to June 17th, and it still will be at Vesper Hall. Also, every year, I think it's in October, I'm sorry, November, some of us attend the Human Rights Conference, and it changes. It was in Kansas City a few years ago, St. Louis one year, excuse me, and Columbia, I think, last year. And this year, we plan to, well, 2018, but plan to work more with the First Christian Baptist Church so that we can be more of a part of the MLK celebration. And that is all I have.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Presentation, and we appreciate it, but before you step away, all the members of the Human Relations Commission, would you stand?
Yes.
For everybody involved in it, so again, thank you so much for your service.
Yes, thank you.
That brings us to item five, which is introduction of Ring of Bill 4562, appointing a municipal judge and presiding judge.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4562, in ordinance approving municipal judge and presiding municipal judge and establishing compensation therefore.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Your second.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I certainly welcome the new judge, Stephanie Graham Tonman, and want to pay, and now Judge Legrosso's new position. Also, certainly want to thank former Judge Jack for his years of service. I don't know how many years he goes back.
Right at 39.
Thirty-nine years. Yeah, that is just amazing, so.
Yeah, he, we had a conversation, and he's ready to do some traveling.
Well, good for him.
Yeah, I think...
Wish him the best.
Yes, yes, we really appreciate him. 1979.
Wow.
Is when he became municipal judge in Blue Springs.
Wow.
Okay, any other further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4562, in ordinance appointing municipal judge and presiding municipal judge and establishing compensation therefore.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4732.
Congratulations to our new judge. We'll have those, well, not yet, because you got to have a swearing in. We're going to do that in just a little bit. And also, the swearing in of the new presiding judge will take place after my mayoral announcements. Tomorrow's election day. It's a very critical issue on the ballot tomorrow for Blue Springs. There are a number of issues on there, but question one, you've seen the signs around town, hopefully, if you live in Blue Springs, you'll receive some melons. It's an opportunity for us to collect some revenue that we're not getting right now. So, every time you see a FedEx truck or UPS truck drive traveling down your street, that is revenue we're not getting. Whereas, if you go to a brick and mortar store in Blue Springs, we are receiving sales tax. And this is the same rate, the same item, except it's called a use tax. Just something to confuse the people, but we, it's not our doing. So, anyway, we hope people will get out and vote. There are a number of issues down south, if you live in the southern part of the city. I don't think I have any other announcements, so I'm going to go through to thoughts to pundit. Tonight comes from Plato, and it is, "Wise men speak because they have something to say, fools because they have to say something," end quote.
Thin line now.
So, now, we're going to ask our city clerk to come down front. We're going to ask our incoming judge and our presiding judge to assemble down here, and we're going to have you take the oath of office.
It's okay, Sheriff, we'll use this one. Where is that boy?
She needs help with my last name, Taramina.
I'm going to be a prop.
That's nice. I'll wing the right one. I don't think she has to be Judge Legrosso. She's a little prettier than Judge. All right, if you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Stephanie Graham Taramina.
I, Stephanie Graham Taramina.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For serving as a municipal judge for the city of Blue Springs.
For serving as the municipal judge for the city of Blue Springs.
I support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Missouri.
I support the constitutions of the United States and the state of Missouri.
The provisions of the city of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
The provisions of the city of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
And state statutes.
And state statutes.
And the ordinances of the city of Blue Springs.
And the ordinance of the city of Blue Springs.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences and information which come into my possession.
And respect the competence and information which come into my possession.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Go ahead and...
This is Judge Skolholt's one.
Do we take sizes on that, or is it just take what you get?
I know. Congratulations. Good. Good. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Don Legrosso.
I, Don Legrosso.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For serving as presiding municipal judge.
For serving as presiding municipal judge.
For the city of Blue Springs.
For the city of Blue Springs.
I support the constitutions of the United States.
I support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of the Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
Provisions of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
And state statutes.
And state statutes.
And the ordinances of the city of Blue Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Blue Springs.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences and information which come into my possession.
And respect the competence and information which come into my possession.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. Good. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Don Legrosso.
I, Don Legrosso.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For serving as presiding municipal judge.
For serving as presiding municipal judge.
For the city of Blue Springs.
For the city of Blue Springs.
I support the constitutions of the United States.
I support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of the Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
Provisions of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
And state statutes.
And state statutes.
And the ordinances of the city of Blue Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Blue Springs.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences and information which come into my possession.
And respect the competence and information which come into my possession.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Since I dressed up?
Yeah.
We have one visitor's appearance form from Robert Taylor. Robert, would you like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what you want to talk about?
Evening, Mayor Ross, council members. My name is Robert Taylor. I'm the estimator and project manager at Realm Construction. Behind me, to my left, is our president, Linda Taylor. She's also here. Realm was started in 1992, and we've continuously been based in Blue Springs, Missouri. Before I get started, I have some handouts about what I'm going to talk about. If any of you would like to see some of these handouts, let me know, and I can pass them out to you. I'm here tonight to talk about city ordinance Number 2500, which was approved on October 5th of 1994. The ordinance prohibits above-ground storage tanks in excess of 250 gallons of fuel. Realm was requesting that we be allowed to install a 2,000-gallon diesel tank and a 500-gallon gasoline tank. Realm would like to note, we interpret this ordinance different than the administration. We have no intention of storing fuel. We plan on using the fuel to fuel our vehicles and our equipment each day or evening. Next, I would like to note that, to our knowledge, Blue Springs is the only city in the metropolitan area that has a complete ban on fuel tanks. To name a few of the local cities, Lee Summit, Overland Park, Olathe, Lenexa, Independence, and Kansas City all allow above-ground storage tanks. Next, I'd like to address an email between Realm and the city of Blue Springs. Particularly, Mayor Ross responded to my email with two concerns. The first concern was the EPA. The tanks we are going to install are actually designed in accordance with EPA specifications. The next concern was Department of Natural Resources. I would like to quote the Assistant Director of Community Development, Mike Ballon. We were tasked to Missouri Department of Natural Resources, they indicated that if a property owner isn't selling any fuel from an above-ground fuel tank, they have no authority over them. So, if it's private property using for private purposes, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources review, they're good. They only care about fuel, fuel pumps above ground and if they're selling it. The reason we would like to do this at Realm, we're always trying to streamline our business and our priorities. By adding the fuel pumps, we will be allowed to fuel our vehicles and equipment each morning and evening at our office. Our employees will be able to drive directly from our office to our job sites. We will not have to stop at any gas stations along the way. This will delete a step in the process, and for those of you who are business owners, you guys all know that steps cost money. We will save money on vehicle miles, gas, and the time that is currently spent driving to the gas stations. Realm Construction is a small business that did an excess of $16 million in 2016 and 17. We have been in business here locally since 1992. We are not asking for a tith, charity, or handout. We are just asking that you allow us to reinvest our money into our business. We truly believe that bringing this asset to our company will cut costs and we will become more efficient, and we hope that it will continue to make us profitable for the next 26 years. In closing, for those of you who are opposed to modifying this ordinance, I ask that you please explain your reasons, and if I am able to, I would like to respond with any answers I have that may alleviate your concerns.
Thirty questions from the council. Councilman Culpepper.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Right now, you have no, no tank at all, correct?
No, ma'am.
Right. I don't know much about tanks and, and costs involved, so is it, I'm sure there's an expense involved, but is it prohibitive to put a tank in the ground?
You are not allowed. If we put it in the ground, we have to get approval from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and then it becomes a lot more cost prohibitive. You have to install, and I haven't researched this from what I've been told, concrete walls, a footing, backup tanks, and I would not be sure stormwater compliance with that. I have not researched in-ground tanks.
And can you tell me when, on the above-ground tanks, what kind of safety precautions are taken? I mean, this is flammable liquid, so I know CGC has no problems with it, so what are the safety issues involved?
The tanks are double-walled, and the hoses are quick disconnect, like you would see at Quick Trip, where you fuel up in case you were to drive off with a hose in your vehicle. They're double-walled, so if the outside wall gets punctured, there's another lining inside. Used to see them, currently, they have the big box around them. That's what, the double wall is now the secondary containment. Additionally, I mean, obviously, we would be installing bollards around these too, so people can't drive into them, would be the other concern.
All right, and, well, I will defer to my fellow councilmen, but it seems like we need to kind of go back and look at the ordinance that's in and what we might do to study what other communities have.
And that is, when I said other communities, I meant in zoned industrial areas. They are not allowed in residential areas, but in the commercial and industrial areas, they are allowed to have fuel tanks.
Well, I would also like to see what other restrictions they may or may not have, because I've not studied it.
Right.
You know, I, I think staff basically knows and kind of been instructed to take a look at Lee Simon's ordinance, take a look at Independence ordinance, and figure out how we frame that to meet the concerns that we might have in Blue Springs. It might be identical, I don't know. And then, we can have our city attorney take a look at it and kind of go from there and maybe come back with a proposed change.
Okay.
I have a question, and I have some comments I'd like to make, Your Honor. Is this a permanent tank or permanent tanks that would be at your location?
They would be there as long as we're willing to pay for them, yes.
Right, okay. So, it's a permanent installation. Mr. Mallon, I assume you did this report on above-ground tanks on the city of Blue Springs? And by your aerial map, it looks like we already have five in that area?
Yeah, we did a quick...
Four, four on his street.
Yes, we had staff do a quick window survey of driving around just from the public right of way, and we determined, took pictures of those that we believe are above-ground fuel storage tanks that meet the general description of what they look like. We didn't contact the property owners to determine actually what was being stored in them, but they do look like the types that have been proposed.
Including several tanks that are in downtown Blue Springs?
Yes.
Is that an industrial area?
I don't know the zoning of that off the top of my head, but I'm getting a nod from Scott Allen that it is.
All right. I mean, my view on this is, we're in the problem-solving business, and this gentleman came to me on December 21st. Is that right, December 21st?
I believe that's correct.
December 21st, with this problem, and I've tried to work it through city staff, and we are here to this point with a problem that he is running to brick walls with, no, we can't do that, no, we can't do that. And the comment I would make is, all of us on this city council are very pro-business and pro-growth. We need to have that message all the way through the organization, every board, every commission. We need to be pro-growth, and we need to be looking for a way to say yes to a business that generates $16 million in revenue. And I would respectfully ask that we send city staff back to work on this, and that we have a fifth Monday in April, and we sit down at a work session, and we find a way to get to a yes for this gentleman.
I'm not sure that's the item on the work session, but again, staff has been instructed to go take a look at Lee Simon, take a look at Independence, get with our city attorney, and come up with a proposed solution.
All due respect, Mayor, is there any timeline to this? A month, six?
ASAP.
Okay. For those of you wondering, I do have a picture of the pump. It's been bought and paid for. It's sitting in Kansas City, Kansas. If you would like to see actually what we will be installing, I have a picture of the pump, of the tank, if you guys are just wondering what we would be installing.
Yeah, why don't you go, why don't you leave a copy of that for staff to take a look at, and we'll work through this and get with our city attorney.
Mr. Mayor.
Propose legislation, yes.
I just wanted to say also, I've been working on this as well, not through Mr. Taylor, but through Brian Suter, and he explained some of the same things that you've talked to me as well. And I agree with Councilman Carter, I think him and I both have been probably tag-teaming staff on this for a while, and I thought we had discussed making this part of that work session. Is that not the case?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, it's something that we can just do without, without that process.
Something we planned to do, and I've already decided what we're going to talk about at the work, at the work session, okay? So, anyway, staff will work with you to try to get it done.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Johnson.
I just had one really quick question. You said it's permanent as long as you're there, so this is, so it's...
If, say, if Blue Springs were to relocate, it would go with us.
I see.
We would, we are leasing it from Mayor Fuel.
Okay, that was really where I was headed.
So, we, yeah, we lease it from them.
Okay, great, yeah.
Again, the legislation will identify those type of things is, and you can work language in it that says that if it's no longer used, it has to be removed. I mean, there are just a number of things that you can do to safeguard having something left there that's going to be unsightly and unattractive for a long period of time, so. Anyway, our city attorney can work through all those specifics. Mr. Johnson.
Your Honor, all good comments tonight, and we have been working on this for a while. No excuses here. There have been a number of other projects in our community that have taken priority over the past few months, one of those being Forsia, which we have brought to fruition. There is an exemption in our current ordinance that allows for an administrative approval of an existing tank, but I understand that doesn't even come close to meeting your needs. We understand that. And we don't know what was going on in 1994. That was... You want to allude?
No, no. If you want to go look up the history, you'll be fine.
Yes.
In all fairness, Councilman Fowler, he'd only been on the Board of Autumn for two years at that time, so.
And I think in 1994, they were having a lot of discussions about sign code as well. So, anyway, staff is certainly not opposed to bringing back... So, anyway, staff is certainly not opposed to bringing back an ordinance that loosens this requirement. We have done that over the past several years, in which we've adopted changes to our landscaping ordinances, we've allowed for administrative approvals on various planning applications to speed up those processes. So, we think it's reasonable to propose some recommendations, and if we can develop a plan between now and April 30th, our next City Council meeting is April 16th, and, April...
April 16th.
April 16th, yes. Did I not say that?
I don't know, maybe I didn't hear you right.
And do we have district meetings between then and... Okay, we do not.
We can send out a proposal.
We will, we will work on a proposal, and if there's a way we can expedite it so that it can actually, there can be something on the April 16th meeting, we will try to hit that date. We understand your concern and like to be able to accommodate your request.
We appreciate the 250-gallon tank, but our initial estimates with Brian, we plan on filling this thing six times a month, so we just need a larger tank than that.
And you have, you're proposing a 2,000-gallon diesel and 550 fuel.
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, thank you. Back in 94, I do recall the state legislator passing down a few unfunded mandates.
We didn't do that when I was there.
Yeah, there's another one right there, so.
We always called home to find out how it was going to affect you before we did it. I'm not sure about today's legislature.
Your Honor, I just would like to also chime in, we are all very pro-business. My, one of the things I would like to look at, since we do have some tanks that are already existing, I think we need to look at those and make sure that when we create this ordinance, what is built into that that may or may not apply to those tanks that already are out there, because we obviously didn't know they were out there.
Mr. Johnson.
Those tanks may well be grandfathered, just like the tanks with John Moore Oil in downtown Blue Springs.
Prior to 94.
Yes.
Anyone else? Is there anybody else, anything else to come forward to Council before we adjourn? Thank you for coming, and certainly you've been heard.
Thank you.
You bet. If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? I guess we want to stay here for a while tonight? We got a second, all in favor aye, all the same sign, we adjourn.